All right, it's six o'clock. We're gonna get this show on the road. Welcome to, I don't even know what day it is. Let's see here, I'm sorry. July 27th, Hadley School Committee for the Hadley Public Schools. This is a meeting that we have, a fairly brief agenda today. And may I get a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second minute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, so it looks like we don't have any public with us today, but what I wanted to frame was just that our brief agenda today is really to talk about the fields, a vacation time rollover, and to vote on breakfast and lunch prices. And then, we do have a whole slate of meetings coming up, as one can imagine. July 30th, this Thursday, we have our initial review of the reopening plans. And then in August, we have three scheduled meetings that are all about reopening, district strategy, goals, and then our regular meeting. So I'm sure that August will be all about reopening plans and movement forward. But today, slightly different direction for our meeting. So with that, I will open up the floor for a public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Okay. Hadley Media. They are public. So having them broadcast, or at least made available, I know you make them available on YouTube, at least recorded after the fact, is very helpful. So having the YouTube link after the fact really does help us get the information out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Nope.
Okay. Presentation and discussion items, we're gonna start with the fields update.
Chris, it's all you.
So, field work started last week. We were two hours into the project when I got a phone call saying, "You already have a problem." It did not really bode well, but we think we have some solutions. We'll know, I guess, after the meeting tonight, if we have those solutions. And we have also met some challenges already in terms of things we need to add to the project. So those are also other agenda items that we'll have to address tonight. But other than that, they're just piling up, you know, they're kind of scraping the loam off the top and piling it up. They will then be sifting it to get any rocks and all the grass, you know, the existing grass that's mixed in, get all that out, and then they'll be reusing it for the fields. Next up will be the irrigation systems. And then, you know, I'm really oversimplifying, but then they'll cover it up and plant the grass, and we'll call it a day, so.
I wish that were true.
There's culprit work by the waterway down there where the water is draining towards, right? So they'll be replacing that?
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be some work along that, just to kind of make sure that the water drains correctly.
So the first agenda item that they have, Chris, is the "To entertain", "Motion to approve a change order of estimated $20,000 to the Fields Renovation Project for the repair of the well." Could you provide some background on that?
Yes, so we were told by the person that had put in the existing well there that the well was fine, and he would be able to give us the amount of water pressure needed. In speaking with the contractor for both, you know, the general contractor and also the subcontractor who's doing the irrigation system, we were told that they did not feel comfortable using the existing well, and that basically the pipe coming out of the ground is, I think it's an inch and a half pipe, and they need at least a three-inch pipe in order to give us the water pressure needed. Otherwise, you know, the irrigation system, as it is planned, won't have sufficient pressure, and what we'll end up doing is we'll have water coming out, but not squirting out far enough, basically, to have that overlap that you need to have full coverage. So I had been working with Jeff on trying to make sure that this well would be good. Apparently, there was a little misunderstanding with the well contractor that Jeff was talking with. He was the person that had put in the original well. And we were told that you could just add on a stronger pump, and that we could get sufficient pressure. Last week, when Jeff spoke with him again, I'm sorry, my cat's meowing like crazy and driving me bananas here, walking back and forth.
Dinner.
He was told that we not only needed to do the pump, but also add on almost an additional well. And that that would help to ensure that we had sufficient pressure. Jeff was kind of taken aback by that, because the amount thrown out for that was about $15,000. And he did not remember hearing that dollar amount at all, or the additional well. So in speaking with the contractor for the irrigation, they just said, "We really would just be better off drilling a whole new well, getting the proper-sized pipe out rather than, you know, trying to more or less Band-Aid it with a bigger pump, it would still be going through a small pipe." So somebody was supposed to come out today and take a look at the situation, and be able to give us some kind of estimate as to what it might cost us, but the plus or minus $20,000 figure was thrown about as a potential cost. I don't have an estimate from him yet, but that's what was said to me the other day. So with that being said, I mean, it really doesn't leave us a heck of a lot of choice, but nevertheless, you know, with an addition as big as that, we obviously wanted to run it by you guys, so.
Chris, we should talk about too, what we have in the budget already, right? What we've.
Yeah, we have about $35,000 in the budget remaining, and we haven't gotten that check yet from Steve Lewis Subaru either. So, you know, we do have the money to pay for it, that's not the problem. It's just, you know, anytime you get a $20,000 addition, it's not exactly something to cheer about, so. But like I said, really not much of a choice there.
So it's over budget, but we do have funding sources for this potentially?
Well, no, it's not. Is it technically over budget? Isn't it part of our contingency?
No.
No?
Not the well, no.
In terms of, we have the contingency funds for it, we are not technically over budget. We're not having to take funds from another source, or not.
Correct, yes. We have contingency. We had $40,000, yeah.
So it's not in the original work specifications, but we have the funding for it. We are not.
Yeah.
And this is all staying within funding for the fields, not pulling anything from district operational funds or our approved budget?
That's correct.
Do you want to do the action items?
I was gonna say, yeah, is there a motion to approve this change order?
I just have a quick question. So we're not over budget, and we are utilizing contingency funding we had set aside for this specific project, so we're not taking anything away from anything else. But we did set aside this funding in case something like this happened?
That's correct, yeah. We had, the bid came in, and I'm going to be rounding it, but at about $670,000, and we had about 712 in total funds. So that difference was basically the contingency, so it was around $32,000.
Great, and so at this point, in an ideal world, there are no other sort of like new things. And of course, things like this happen, right? It always takes longer, it always costs more, you know, just, this is the world of construction and excavation. But let's just, now we hope that this is it, and from here till the finish line, there won't.
Except for the next agenda item, that's right.
Yeah, we have, I mean, in fact, I have another change order here for some trimming of trees along the one side of the field that are hanging over the field. And that one's smaller, you know, so there are always going to be minor change orders, but that's a big one, so.
Okay.
We certainly, hummered, we certainly hope that there isn't as significant a change order as this one.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right, great. I would love to make a motion to draw the funds needed to support this unexpected $20,000 expense, I think it is.
Well, yeah, I mean, again, and that was just a quick estimate. We don't actually have a quote or anything, that's why I said around $20,000.
Great, is that a sufficient motion?
So it's a motion to approve a change order of estimated up to $20,000, around $20,000 to the Fields renovation for the repair of well?
That's.
I think we really should keep it of, you know, the funds required to do the well. That way, if it comes in at $22,000, we're not calling it an emergency meeting to get the other $2,000 or something, you know?
Yeah, I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the next item?
Or is that the Abutter?
Yes.
Okay, so, and this was the, two hours in, we had a problem. So there is an Abutter on the, I guess we call it the west side of the field, that had planted crops in that area year after year. They leased it from the town. And David Nixon and I, you know, discussed this at great length. We were trying to find the lease, and, you know, try to find how payment was made. I ended up speaking with the Abutter, and he told me that it was, there is no written lease, it was just a handshake agreement that was done, and for years, they planted there. And then, you know, I told David, "You can stop looking for this lease now, because, you know, we don't have one." And I guess every November, after all the crops were harvested, he would pay the town, you know, a certain amount of money. David wasn't sure what that amount was. But, so what happened was, he planted the crops this year, and then when the contractors kind of went to set up all the snow fence around the project, they saw that there were crops coming into the area that they were going to need to be digging. So, you know, they called me, and I spoke with Ann, and then I spoke with David, and we had this whole numerous discussions about this. And then I did speak with the farmer, and I asked him for a number of items, first being, what is planted there? Second being, what are the timelines for harvest? And third, what is the estimated value of what you have planted there? And so, some of the vegetables are already harvested. There are still, I'm trying to think of what it is here, seedless watermelon and cantaloupe planted, and those would be harvested probably within the next week now, because a week ago, he told me two weeks. So I would think that would be a week from now. Then, the tomatoes and peppers would be harvested any time between now and the first frost. And so I told him right off the bat that we obviously couldn't give him until the first frost. That just, that cannot happen. I did reach out to the contractors and ask them, "Can you just save this side of the field till later?" And apparently, they can't, just because of the way the designs are done and the drainage is specked out, they have to actually start right at that area. So they had several days more of scraping all the loam off, and so they could put this off for a while. But by next week, they said they really needed to be able to go in there. So in speaking with David, excuse me, and then with Ann afterwards, David suggested that we actually just purchase the value of the crops from the farmer, just to kind of honor the lease agreement that he had with the town. The remaining crops, after I take out the cantaloupe and watermelon, are around $6,000. Again, it's hard to get an exact amount, because he's actually going to be able to, I know that we're picking tomatoes and peppers in our garden, so I assume he will be able to harvest some of them last week and going into this week. So he'll get some value out of it. So I don't have an exact dollar amount, but it'll still probably be somewhere around $6,000. And so that was the other item that we were asking your opinion on whether or not we should do that, and if so, approval to do it. There's one thing I would probably mention, is that we would probably want to use some other funds than athletic field funds, I would think, for this. Just because, you know, it's, it's just that if you gave a donation for the athletic fields, you'd hate to hear where, you know, that your donation went to something, you know, else other than the fields or something like that. So I would recommend that we, you know, perhaps utilize school choice or some other funds for this.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Did the leasur pay the town for use of that land this year? And is it something that the town could refund to cover the loss of crops on town land?
He did not pay the town yet, he pays in November after the season, not for the next season. I could certainly ask David that whatever the town gets paid would come back to the schools, considering we're, you know, we're paying for that certain portion.
I mean, it seems like we have a project understanding that was land that we could develop. And unfortunately, I feel for them, they're, I don't want anybody to be out of pocket losing crops that they had assumed, you know, they could plant. But if they're paying for use of that land, it seems like the two should kind of offset somewhat.
Absolutely, sure, yeah, I can run that by him.
I think that's a good point, Heather, we, Chris and I had talked about that, about the other, you know, sort of questioning, how did this happen? Because the farmer did know not to plant the southern portion, but it's the western portion which isn't as clear as you look at the process. So if you're, how do you say, if you're in the parking lot looking south towards the mountain range, those crops right in front of you were not planted, because he knew we were gonna do them, but it's to your, it would be to your right. There's this strip that's surprisingly large, actually. And if you're out there, and you go and you stand in the parking lot, there's some wooden stakes with flags on them that demarcate out what they're doing, and it's quite significant. So you can see that it just was unexpected how big the project's actually gonna be. So I support this to make sure it's fair. Maybe it's a lesson learned, we could have been better in writing down the plan for this year. And I know we'd been telling the farmer for years that this was gonna happen, and so maybe there was a bit of crying wolf, right now we actually mean it. So I think we bear some of that responsibility, maybe for not putting this in writing in sufficient time. So, and especially if we can get some compensation back from the town, you know, if the farmer, assuming the farmer's gonna pay the town something.
Sure.
It seems like a fair deal.
So I have a question. We are talking about purchasing the value of the crops, or, in other words, we are talking about purchasing the crops. And we are a food purchaser. We purchase a lot of food on behalf of the schools for feeding people breakfast and lunch. And actually, that continues through the summer. I know Diane Zach does a lot of purchasing of produce from local farmers to the greatest extent possible. So I would say that if we're, you know, so long as some of those crops aren't tobacco, that we should be utilizing, not just, you know, paying off, but also receiving produce that, in a way that we're able to manage it. That that would be the most collaborative way to sort this out between neighbors.
I can certain, oh, I'm sorry, I can ask him, you know, one of the problems in doing that is that there will be some crops picked, but most of the plants, unfortunately, before the season is done, will be just, you know, basically plowed over. So, you know, he won't get the full amount of what he planted. But I can certainly see if there can be something done, I'll have to coordinate that with Diane Zach as well, because this is kind of a perishable item, but she is serving meals throughout the summer, so, you know, we may be able to use them, sure.
Chris, can I also ask, is there a way, instead of doing two separate transactions, to kind of figure out what this farmer would end up paying in November? And just, instead of saying it's six grand, subtracting what he would end up probably paying, or estimate his payment, instead of doing two transactions, just doing it once?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's something that can be done?
Sure. Just writing this down. Yeah, I can ask that as well. That's a good idea. Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so given kind of the follow-up on these items, do we need a motion to approve a change order for this? Or can we agree that we're gonna explore what the options are?
I basically need an answer tonight. They, here's the thing, they want me to send him basically a letter saying that all his crops need to be removed by next Monday. They need this so that they can keep going as planned. I'd really hate to send him that letter with the knowledge that we're trying to work out something financially, but I really can't say anything, you know, and that's, because then you really send that, you know, kind of pretty cold letter saying that it's all gonna go by next week. And if there is some kind of, you know, financial compensation we can work out with him, it would be pretty good as far as a PR standpoint to have that submitted with the letter.
So can we prove, can we put forth a motion? Motion to purchase crops valued at no more than, I think I heard, $7,000, with the ability to salvage and harvest whatever is salvageable, and use it towards food, our own food services, and minimizing the number of transactions to one, if at all possible?
I would support that, is there a second?
Chris, I thought the number was six, does it matter, six, seven?
It was six, actually, yes.
Okay, so I amend that motion to six.
I mean, if you wanted flexibility, I don't know, was six a hard number given from the farmer?
No, it wasn't a hard number, but again, because he's able to harvest some of the things out of there, I would actually look for the net of, this is what you gave me for a value, but you were able to harvest, just, I'm just gonna throw something out, like, well, you got 10 bushels of tomatoes and this much of peppers, you know, so that should kind of be subtracted off the value of what we give you.
Yeah.
So it's gonna have to kind of be a little bit of a back and forth, where he gives me the net value, and then I say, okay, you know, we can do that.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris, can I ask, like, I know you mentioned, like, this shouldn't necessarily come out of, like, the athletic fields fund, is there a recommendation of, like, where that money would come from?
Yeah, I would probably take it out of the school choice account. We have used that in account in the past to pay for, for example, the purchase of this land, I think way back when, you know, various building type of projects. So, I mean, it fits into what we've used the funds for. And again, it's just one of those things that you really hate to use money donated for the field, so.
Right, no, totally.
So that brings something up, is this, is this the land that we had to purchase after the fact?
No, no, this is, that's at the far corner of the field from it, actually.
Got it, different Abutter.
Yeah.
So I assume, Chris, then, that, you know, you're working closely with David Nixon, and the future administrator will know when, once this lease is paid in the fall, that it does still need to be paid, even though they weren't able to utilize all of the land, because they were compensated for what was unable to be utilized?
I'll probably reach out to the Abutter with David. You know, we can maybe even set up just a conference call, so that we're all on the same page. And that way, you know, we can see how much he pays, and if it's going to be netted out of what we pay him, then we won't even have to worry about the November payment, you know, but that way David's on board as well, so.
Okay, you have what you need for that item, then?
I do, was it all, was it voted on?
Yes.
Okay, it was, all right, yeah, that's fine then, thank you.
So then the third action item we have is around allowing a school committee liaison to the Fields project, in this case, this is Paul, to approve change orders in accordance with bid documents, with the understanding that all change orders will be reported to the entire committee at whatever our next regular meeting would be, so that he is able to have the authority to approve these things as they are needed in this construction environment.
And then we would report back. So in this case, this is the first, like, change that we ran into, so we had to call a meeting, because we want to keep everybody apprised of things and keep everything very public. We would still report everything, but if one school committee member who's familiar with the project could say, "Yes, this is in alignment with it," so we can move forward, and then report at the regular meeting, that would be helpful.
So it probably should be bounded by the funds we have available for the fields, right? It's not like I can spend, we're authorized to spend other funds.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you just want to reach into your checkbook, Paul, you can do whatever you'd like. Buy some wells, buy some other stuff.
Paul's gonna add a water slide.
Nice, good idea.
So motion, yeah?
I just have a question, actually. If it's something that's large, though, if it's something that's the change order of up to $20,000, I know that, you know, it'd be great to not have to call an emergency meeting, but could we at least get an FYI email, so if something big's happening, we're not waiting, you know, 29 more days, you know, that comes up?
Absolutely, and I think that in accordance, I mean, certainly if Paul thought, whoa, this is, you know, we're gonna talk about this as an entire committee. So we would definitely email and inform. It was just, for example, something like this, I'm grateful to have the first kind of public conversation. I think that's really important, I don't know, something just leapt off my roof. So, I don't know what that was, it wasn't, it was like a pan, nobody walked on it. But, so we want to keep this public, but like, in this case, if we hadn't gotten a meeting together, and we've gotta do something in, you know, three days or five days, yeah.
So motion to approve Paul's ability to approve change orders within the budgeted amount, giving us FYIs as possible, and updating us at that next school committee meeting.
Second.
Your second? Oh, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll probably abstain, right, is appropriate?
No, you can vote for yourself.
I can vote on myself?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, um, next, we have, I think we're ready to move on to the rollover of vacation.
So our 12-month employees, I probably don't have to explain this to you too much, our 12-month employees found it rather difficult to utilize their time during COVID, extremely difficult. For example, David Olson, our tech person, there was no way that he was taking any time. And all of our 12-month employees, so those are your 12-month contracted employees, not, so, special education director, myself, David Olson, and the two building principals. What the rollover would allow for, and I have rollover language, that if you agree to this, conceptually, it's been put together by the Dupre Law Office. Essentially, it allows those employees to roll that vacation over just for what, this one year, it's a one-time event, and if they don't use it, then as a one-time, it can turn into sick time. Sick time does not create a financial liability for the town. Sick time, especially in times of COVID, most of those employees are relatively new. They don't have a lot of sick time on the books. David, well, April does, because she came as a teacher, but Pam and Jen are still relatively new employees. So that's what the rollover request is, it would be one year, the employee would have the option, if right at the start, they might say, "There's no way, I already have vacation time, there's no way I'm gonna use it, just put it in my sick bank." Or they can see what happens, and what they don't use goes to their sick bank. And that would be a one-time event.
Yeah, my thoughts on this one, you know, I mean, I think people are doing everything that they can right now to make sure that we are, you know, have everything lined up, plans in place, what we know now. And I see this as, you know, helping them to understand, it is important to use vacation time. It is important for your own mental clarity to take a step away and use time off. Paul and I had this discussion a while back. And even in this environment, where it might mean that you're not actually going anywhere, or you're doing a day trip, or, you know, it's not the vacation that you had planned. But I also understand where some people, they're unable to do that, and because of their dedication and devotion to. to wanting to get everything up and running by this end date that we have, this start date. And I also understand that it's hard for folks right now to even think about taking a vacation. So I think that this is a nice gesture. I wish honestly more employers would do it because it, I think, acknowledges that this year has, is not been the status quo. It is not the norm. And to, you know, use it or lose it in 2020, it's like so many people are going to just lose it. So I, I'm in favor of this. And I'm, I'm glad to hear with the financial impact, you know, in terms of minimizing that, the ability to roll it into the sick bank as needed in the future, I think that's, that's helpful.
Yeah, I agree with everything you said, Heather. I think it's, I think it's important. I, I, I love, I like the fact that it's one year. And I would urge our colleagues to use it at their, whenever they can to, it is important to, to step away in order to gain perspective and bring that refreshed perspective back to work.
And I will have you know that, which I will get there for good reason. I'm not there. But every single one of the administrators included in this, except for me at this point, but I'll get there, have actually, they are doing that. So, so yes, they are.
Great. So do we need a motion on this?
Yeah, we need a motion to approve a one-time vacation rollover or conversion to sick time for 12 months administrators due to COVID. There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, and finally, we need to set breakfast and lunch prices, which we have done at prior meetings. It looks like the, there is a recommendation to increase the breakfast and lunch prices from $3 up to $3.10 for lunch and from a buck 75 to a dollar 85 for breakfast. That is the increase from, for this coming fiscal year as compared to the past fiscal year. Now, I'm trying to remember the last time we increased. It was, it was at least a year ago, if not two, because we did have discussions around making sure that we weren't out pricing our, our families, making sure that we, because we are so used to seeing the lunch account where it is every month in those financial reports, that we weren't making, you know, the situation any worse. But we also had to recognize that the price of food has increased.
Can we, can we comment on what the rate of the increase is relative to the previous increase?
Chris, do you know that?
You're muted, Chris.
Sorry. I believe the lunch went up a dime and the breakfast went up a nickel last time we, we did it, which I believe was two years ago.
And this time it's 10 and 10.
That's correct, yes. If I can just fill you in about this quickly. So Diane is filling out paperwork basically to the federal government with all kinds of information about her lunch program. Part of it is the amount that we will be charging next year. The guidelines set by the federal government for lunch prices are that she's supposed to be, what we charge is supposed to be equal to what she receives for free lunch, which right now is $3.48. So obviously, we're way below that. They do give a nickel leeway, so we could actually be anywhere between $3.43 and $3.53. We both thought that with the current situation, you know, certainly going up to, you know, that much of an increase was just not going to happen no matter what. And that anyone who were to audit the food services program would certainly have that understanding as well. But we thought we might at least try to make some kind of progress. So, you know, again, in case of an audit, we could say, well, you know, look at the situation we're in. We're not going to increase the price by, you know, what, what is it? 43 cents, you know, per meal. We're, we're moving toward that goal, but we're not going to get there this year. All of which could be moot because in all honesty, they are looking to file legislation that would keep the lunches free for FY21. So they're free through the summer. And I believe it was filed just the other day to try to get that to go through the whole year, in which case, nobody will pay anything. And that would be ideal. But I also wanted to add that the $3.48 figure, because I'm on where school committee, we just increased our lunch prices the other night, too. And they are in the same ballpark that we are. So they were nowhere near that $3.48. And to be honest, I don't know a district that is.
Tell me, Chris, again, what's that $3.48?
That's what we get reimbursed for free lunches. And so they, what they basically say is, well, we're giving you $3.48 for these lunches. That should be what you're charging everyone.
Nice.
So that's kind of where they are. But we, we just honestly didn't feel comfortable with an increase anywhere near that size.
But is there a stipulation that we do? What would the audit criteria be?
I, I think the audit would, would just point out that, you know, you are below the threshold and you should, you should be working to get up to that point.
Do we have a sense of how much a dime for each meal would increase of revenue?
Not, I, I could probably find that out, but I mean, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you.
I guess here's what I'm, I'm thinking is just, is this a significant increase? And during these times, is it even worth the increase?
Well, I mean, let me just, and I can do some incredibly rough math here. So, you know, by no means hold me to this.
Because we're always at a deficit. And so does it really, and I guess I'm sort of saying, is it, how much is this going to close that deficit?
Yeah, I mean, just say, for example, that with the number of kids we have, just say we serve 500 meals a day, right? Times 180 days, times 10 cents, it's $9,000. So actually, a surprising amount. That's a little more than I expected. But again, that's, that's really rough math based. In fact, we know already we're not going to have 180 school days this year. So that's kind of out the window already. But again, you know, it would be in the, we'll call it $7,000 to $9,000 range.
I, I mean, I think that our, our prices have remained low. I, as much as I'm in favor of raising it, not too much, you know? But I also know that we may be faced with far fewer folks having lunch this coming year, especially if the situation of what that lunch entails, if it is grab and go, if it is not a sit down, you know, in the cafe, you may have fewer people buying it. But I think that this is just because they're, you know, if they're able to eat at home. But I'm, I'm in favor of increasing it because I remember our conversation two years ago. It was kind of like, we are not, we are nowhere near what the reimbursement was. So let's bring it up at least partly in line. But let's not, you know, we don't want families to be in shock about the increase.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that, that both Diane and I are very cognizant of, you know, first, the financial situation the entire country is in at this point in time. But also the fact that you always walk that fine line between, I mean, we're never profitable, so I won't say that. But between break even and the number of lunches that you'll serve, you know? We could charge enough to break even on these meals. But what would happen then is you'd end up, instead of serving, say, 500 meals a day, we'd serve 300 because some people would just walk away and say, you know what? It's getting too expensive to get my lunch at school, you know? And, and the end result is that the student would probably bring in their own lunch, but it would not be as nutritionally balanced as, say, the meal that's served in the cafeteria. So we, we try to, you know, really walk that line as, as finely as we can.
This doesn't impact reduced lunch fees for kids that are on reduced lunches? When, when they go back to that?
I don't believe so. I think it's just a flat amount that they pay and it's not a percentage of, you know, what the lunch price is.
So you need a motion? A motion to approve breakfast and lunch prices by 10 cents per meal for the next fiscal year? Is that a sufficient motion?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, great. We've done one, two, three, four, five action items, all of our presentation and discussion items. We have four upcoming regular meeting dates that are on the books. The only other topic I had for today, I wanted to just compliment Hadley Media and all of the administration and students and staff who contributed to the Hopkins 2020 graduation video. It came together and it looked awesome. So I really hope the seniors and their families are proud of it because it was, thank you. It was the closest thing that I think we could have gotten to being in that gym and having a live graduation and then some because you got to bring in, you know, the different speakers, the, seeing all of the lists of awards, seeing the senior photos and their, their wills and, you know, seeing just some of the action shots, too. I just, I really enjoyed it. So I just want to congratulate everyone on it.
It was very nicely done. Nice.
That's great. I'm sure there will be more soon. All right, is there anything else for today, folks?
I wonder, so we have a marathon set of meetings coming up. Heather, does it make sense to just, I know there's a, a policy that governs public comment and there's going to be a lot of people who have, who, who may want to express their feelings. Does it make sense to recap or highlight some of that at this juncture?
Sure. And then if we include it in the packet or if we want to lead off with that in terms of opening our meeting and just reminding folks about that policy, we do have a policy.
And it's hyperlinked into the notes that you have of that meeting under public comment.
Yeah.
That policy's definitely, yeah.
BEDH is the actual policy in our district policies. And the takeaways are, of course, you know, we welcome public at all of our meetings. We are thrilled when we have public at our meetings. And we're just, you know, we're glad to have public involved and contributing to the discussion. The length that speakers are allowed is three minutes to present their material. However, we have offered extensions for that with the committee's approval. We do record that as part of the regular meeting. We don't tend to engage with speakers during that public comment, nor do we answer questions directly. We, we sometimes do, but there's not an expectation that we would engage during that public comment. However, we also, as we move through the agenda items and we, if we continue to have public on, which we hope that they don't just leave after public comment, we do allow audience members to ask clarifying questions during those subsequent deliberations on agenda items. So that's very helpful when we can answer things in the moment as we're discussing, clear up any, you know, miscommunications we might have had or clear up any questions that might be lingering. Obviously, improper conduct remarks, personal comments about personnel, about specific people, those are not allowed. And if anybody does continue with that, we, we will cut off the public comment for that individual. But people have been very respectful of that in public comment. And as the chair, I will address and call on, I've tried to through Zoom, make sure that anyone who does wish to participate in public comment is able to raise their hand in the participants' pane and then I can call on them and make sure that everyone is recognized that wishes to speak.
And Heather, just so you know, in anticipation of a large number of people attending that meeting, Corey Veltzvic will attend as an employee. So she will manage the chat for us and she can help with tracking those questions and making sure. So we're not trying to read the chat and participate in a meeting. She'll assist with that.
Very helpful. Public comment so far has been primarily engaged in through discussion, through verbal discussion. We have made use of chat where we've needed to. Most recently, Humira shared a link with some public who had asked about our, I'm forgetting, the anti-racism resolution. That's what it was, a link to that directly. And you were able to share that, Humira. Folks were able to check that out right then because for whatever reason, the link in the packet was not, it was a PDF. It was scanned, it was not working. But otherwise, I have encouraged folks to not, not use the chat box, the typing chat as their public comment, but more to discuss, air out what they want to discuss because that really is what we're looking for, is being able to let folks speak to an item and then have us consider that as we move forward.
Great, thank you, Heather.
Yeah, that was pretty helpful.
Great suggestion, Humira.
Do we want to give just a quick, if folks are listening, just an overview of what we're going to cover, of what they should prep for? Because there's been a lot of good work in prepping documents for that. Where they can find them?
Yeah, Annie, do you want to cover that? What our next four meetings are going to be?
Sure. So the, the decision, the school committee has the authority and the complete and total authority to approve the plan that is presented or not. And the school committee has the authority to make a recommendation at any time about how to proceed. So what will happen on Thursday is that the reopening team will present the plan, the overall district plan. This plan has been available publicly since July 9th. So people have been able to watch as it's being developed and provide input to me and to other members of the team via email. Some people have called. So at that meeting on Thursday, it, the purpose of that meeting is for the school committee to evaluate the extent to which the proposed plans are informed by the science around how you reduce risk when reopening schools. That's really what the school committee is attempting to evaluate and to hear from the public and to consider some of the input that families provided in the survey around reopening. And that's the primary purpose of that meeting. I think it's important for the public to understand that on Thursday, the school committee has the authority to do whatever it would like. But at this point, the plan is that, the point of Thursday is not to vote on a final plan, is not to say, this is what's going to happen for a return to school and make that decision on Thursday. It's just to evaluate the extent to which the plan takes into consideration what science is telling us about reducing risk when reopening schools. And then the following Thursday, the school committee would vote. That provides us with just roughly a week to make any changes the school committee recommends. And then that following Thursday, I would argue, and I'll restate this on this coming Thursday. So on August 6th, I would argue that if, if the school committee is comfortable really leaning on science to inform what decision, and by that I also mean public health data, we make about what phase or what plan we're in, it would be very hard to say on August 6th, this is what is going to happen in September. Because the public health data could change. The school committee could say, if school were to open tomorrow, we're comfortable with these plans. If these metrics held as they are, we're comfortable with these plans to bring children into buildings. But I think it would be challenging on August 6th to say, we know what the data are going to be at the end of August. Therefore, we're going to say now what is happening the first week of September. The school committee, as you pointed out, meets August 24th for a very different purpose, to talk about district strategy. And again, for a regular business meeting on August 31st. I would say that on August 31st, school committee can reevaluate community transmission data and then say, all right, this is a plan that needs to be in place right now for students. Based on community transmission data, we should be in person. We should be remote, whatever that is. But that's probably important for the public to understand. As, as, as much as we want to know, if you decide on August 6th what you're going to do. to do five weeks out, a lot can change in terms of public health data in five weeks, um, so that's just for the public to understand.
That makes sense, and, and that August 24th meeting is really serving, um, in place of what we, we would traditionally have a retreat, um, that would be really dedicated time, uh, to talk through the district strategy, vision, um, superintendent goals, I think we've done a lot of dialogue around that, especially most recently, Annie, with, um, your superintendent review, this is a dedicated carved-out time to talk through that, um, but of course, that's, as were past retreats, this is public, open meeting.
Hey, Annie, on, um, July 30th or August 6th, will, will the reopening committee be coming with a recommendation?
Um, yes, a recommendation that, yeah, so I say that like, yes, a recommendation that, the biggest, the, the, I mean, spoiler alert, our big recommendation is, uh, follow the data, follow the science, and the challenge in that is that it requires people to be really, really flexible, and that is not usually how schools run, right? It's much easier to say, we'd like to say, we know what's gonna happen, month to month, so, um, the recommendation will be, um, if we see these metrics, we think it's safe to do this, not just we, but the, the doctors we've talked to, but if these metrics don't hold, then we really should be doing this, that's, I mean, that's kind of a non-answer answer, but really, that is the recommendation, and that is, it may sound really basic, but that is not what you're seeing in a lot of places, what you're seeing is a straw pull, pick a plan, that's what we're gonna do.
And so on Thursday, are we starting with an overview of the plan?
Yeah. And the team will be there, uh, Jason Burns and Becky Jelineus, who are the president and vice president of the union, will be there to talk about, um, some of the recommendations they made around adjustments to the remote learning plan, as well as survey data from a survey that they administered, the principals will be there to talk about the, the key differences in each school's plan, cohorting at a high school is very different than cohorting at a, at an elementary school, um, and, uh, the Dr. Mosler from the Board of Health will also be there, um, she's had access to the plan the whole time, and I spoke to her over the weekend, so she'll be available as well to respond to questions.
That's great, and can you remind us ultimately, does the Board of Health have to approve our plan?
No. No, the school committee, the school committee, um, I, I would say if, if Board of Health, you know, if they were the ones probably at the end of the day, but it is not their authority, um, then it might be more folks saying, well, you have to wait for, to determine, see where the data lead before you decide, but no, it's a school committee decision entirely.
I, I've, I just have to say, I find this especially interesting, and it's sort of like a, uh, it's, it's a very intentional decision from the very top down to push the decision-making to the local level, and to the elected officials, which I just, I find it very interesting.
And, um, shoot, I lost my train of thought. Gone.
So, Annie, as we-
Oh, so where, I'm sorry, where, where can, where can people find the documents?
Uh, the documents, I will send another updated reminder to folks, and they are also, I will make sure that the link is on the district website as well, so I'll check that tomorrow as well, and-
The packet will go out tomorrow or today?
Uh, the pa, I'm sorry, the packet will go out tomorrow as well, and that, that'll be posted, and the link will be there, so it's the same link that's always been there, that people are following along with the plan, but it'll be, thank you, uh, Heather, it'll also be included right, uh, in the agenda, uh, within the agenda, and on the district website, and I'll remind families as well.
And do we have enough bandwidth, in case we have hundreds of people that participate?
I think I can get up to 500 on this, but I'll double-check that.
I'm just looking at the, what the Gazette said about the Northampton, and I know we're much smaller, but it also mentioned it was a six-hour meeting, so, uh-
There you go, Ethan, there you go, Ethan.
A marathon.
Yeah. Um, yeah, uh, that's, so that's what we're doing, so I will make sure that, there's links in an email tomorrow.
Great. Anything else for tonight? We have a lot ahead of us.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oh.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hi.